Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 15, 2024 City of Della Field Common Council Chamber Meeting. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please, Molly.
Other person, Henry?
Here.
Other person, Schaefer?
Here.
Other person, Valdi?
Here.
Other person, Grimmer?
Here.
Other person, Price?
Here.
Other person, Berg?
Here.
And then other person, Wilkin, is excused this evening. Mayor Iker?
Here.
And Minister Hefner?
Here.
Okay, on to item four, minutes, please. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to approve the June 17 meeting minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 17 meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Minutes are approved. Okay, item five, citizen of Della Field Citizens Commons. Please come forward. Start with your name and address, please.
Hold on one moment. Can you touch that long button right in the middle? And then I do need your name. There you go, and your name and full address.
It works now? Okay. Thank you all for allowing me to come and speak in front of you. My name is Daniel Webster. I live at 1302 Milwaukee Street. Could I approach you and give you some pictures, please? Sir?
I've lived here for 27 years.
Hold on. If you could hold your comment until you actually sit in front of the microphone, please.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll put it in the course by this morning.
I have lived in Della Field for 27 years. I'm very familiar with flooding, runoff, the Milwaukee Street development, and so forth. It's... The issue is, my home on Milwaukee Street with the runoff is still increasing, coming off of Lappin Peak and so forth. It's going underneath the parkway to the drains, coming straight down Milwaukee. Mostly, the concern I have is the habit of acting first and cleaning up later. We do a great job in this city. We have some outstanding DPW workers. I would say 98% of them are outstanding. We've developed this city to something a lot of people never thought of. But we develop it, we don't think about it. If you look at these pictures, the first one you'll see is coming out of my driveway. I'm right on the curve of Milwaukee Street. That's looking west. In my truck, the front of the truck is in the street, so I can see west for traffic. My other behalf, which drives a Honda CRV, is even further out because it's lower. If you look at the next picture, that is facing east out of my neighbor's driveway. These are taller than I am, and I'm 5'10". And the west picture is from my neighbor's driveway. She is literally in the roadway to get out of her driveway. This is not our land. This is your land. This is city right-of-way. I have never had thistles like this in the 12, almost 14 years, I'm sorry, of living on Milwaukee Street. It's all coming because of the development of Milwaukee Street. From the park, coming to my house, is all underground. Then it has two houses, two and a half houses, that is open ditch. Then there's one inlet on the west side of my neighbor's drive going out, and one inlet on the west side of my driveway going out. The water goes right over it. I've... I can't take care of this anymore. I'm 76 years old. Last year, I called the DPW. They came out with a couple guys, and they yanked a few of them out. The problem with these is this is an underground vine. And this vine is going into the whole island of our property now. The only way it's going to come out is if it's dug out. So I called, and I asked about it. Mr. Hefner instructed the DPW that we would be charged for reclamation of the property, which is not ours. It's yours, that I pay for. I don't understand it. This flooding's been going on and runoff and crap for years. We have four major ways into Della Field. Genesee, north and south, Main Street and Milwaukee Street. Main Street and Milwaukee Street are the prettiest areas to drive into our city. And yet, the maintenance sucks. I'm sorry.
Mr. Webster, I understand, I understand the issue you're bringing up, and you've illustrated it very well. And if it goes beyond this, you know, we'd be happy to hear more. But I think it'd be a fair response for the city staff and me to get back to you on how we're going to handle this. You're looking for a solution here. Let's work on that. We understand that this is upsetting to you.
It has to be torn out.
We'll come up with something. We'll come back with you.
And for I or my neighbor to pay for it is ridiculous.
We'll help.
So we can't discuss?
I know. So we will get back, we will get back to you with what a good course of action is. It should help take care of it and point you to the proper...
Can you tell me when?
When we'll get back to you?
Yeah. Because, right now, they're going to Bloom for the third time.
I've got similar issues. Not all in the right-of-way, but I've got similar issues.
And it is a city ordinance.
I will, I will give you, I'll give you a timeline by tomorrow, okay?
Thank you so very much. Again, I appreciate your time. Have a great evening.
Yeah, you too. Is there anybody else who'd like to talk? Citizens Commons. Going once? Okay, Citizens Commons are now closed. Okay, we will take the Special Order of Business from the Fire Chief, item six, out of order when the chief gets here. He's double-booked it, but he needs this handled tonight, so we'll take it when he shows up. There are no items on the consent agenda, so from there, we'll go on to Boards, Committees, and Commission Reports. Molly, licenses?
None.
No licenses. Mr. Grimmer, Plan Commission?
Thank you. Two items with Plan Commission tonight. The first is discussion and possible action on amending the text of Chapter 52, zoning, specifically CBD 2. This came to Plan Commission. Miller Marriott wanted to develop 433 Genesee, which is right across the street, which is Zone CBD 2, and requested a change in zoning to CBD 1, which would allow him more flexibility in size, location, parking, et cetera. Plan Commission was concerned with the potential height that would result in changing from CBD 2 to CBD 1, along with parking issues. But following discussion, it was also determined that development of this site and similar sites, given their close proximity to Genesee Street, would be hampered. So in your packet is a list of properties, including this one, which would be, which the zoning ordinance would be changed to address specifically related to relaxing setbacks and floor area ratios to allow easier, better, more appropriate development. Those properties, like I said, are listed in the packet. This was passed by Plan Commission unanimously. So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 832 to amend the text of Chapter 52, specifically section 52-111AF, to modify the CBD to central business district standards.
I'll second that motion.
I'm going to ask Ms. Jackie.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. The next item we have is the Frank property, looking to reconfigure three lots and create an additional fourth lot. Mr. Frank has been at this quite some time, and has finally come up with a plan that meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance by working with his neighbors. Plan Commission approved this again unanimously. He's planning on reconfiguring three lots to four, meeting the ordinance requirement of a minimum width of 200 feet. All newly created lots comply with lot width, and Plan Commission's opinion is that there is continuity with other lots in nearby subdivisions.
See, I see the applicants here. If anyone has any questions, we can invite them up. Raise your hand if you think you have one. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Della Field DELCO 754983, 2872 Nagawicke Road, DELCO 754984002, 3,000 Nagawicke Road, DELCO 754984001, 3,100 Nagawicke Road, requesting the CSM approval to reconfigure three lots and create an additional lot for the purpose of creating an additional home site.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, it passes. Your saga's over. Thank you for your patience. Okay, anything else?
The only thing I would add is there's a lot of great development going in the grain, so lots to look forward to. Hopefully, we get those, those new occupants in quickly, and we get to take part in their, their great offerings. They're all great businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Lake Welfare Committee, Alderman Price.
Yes, we met last week. We started with some sad news. We learned that Don Tills died the day before our meeting, and Don had been in our committee for over 25 years. A senior member, was an ex-DNR guy, so he was a huge value and a great person, and he never said a word. He was sick. So it was a big shock. We had the sewer pack people in at the lake last week, and they were here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and did a lake survey. I was with them on one of those days. The good news is they didn't find any issues. Everything looked good. They didn't find any newly beasts of species. So that was an exciting thing to hear. We sent back the impervious surface amendment that we put into Plan Commission that was adapted two years ago, but they took out the square footage percentage we had, saying it would be 50% of the property could be impervious surface. We sent that back, saying we would allow 40% of the square footage of the lot to be, well, 60% could be impervious and 40% not impervious. So that's going back to the Plan Commission for their, for their next meeting. So that was the last thing we had. One other thing, Lake Ordinance meeting was set for September 12, and this year, we're going to have it in this building, because it's larger and cooler and better acoustics.
Very good.
Won't be as exciting to not be on the lake, but still.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Park and Recreation Commission, Tree Board, Alderman Schaefer.
Yeah, Park and Rec is...
Yeah, Park and Rec is diligently working on the five-year plan, which the current plan runs through the end of this year, so we need to totally revamp that. Although we're gonna get it done before budgeting season. The Liberty Park music series is going well. We're having larger crowds than we did last year, in fact. And more families, more kids, which may be the type of acts we've got, maybe the fact that it's earlier, we're scheduled earlier in the evening, make it a little easier for families. But the kids from Wisconsin crowd counts were between like eight hundred and a thousand, so great turnout there. And last item, the two benches were installed by the scouts on the North River Walk and Colin Patterson was the scout using it for his Eagle Scout qualification project. He sent everybody a thank you and pictures of the crew and the bench, so. Thanks from him and thanks to him.
Awesome. And we encourage Eagle Scout projects in our city. The price is right and everyone gets something out of it, right?
Good for everybody.
Alright, anything else? Okay, thanks, Mark. So Public Works Commission, or Committee, Dirk is not here, so you can check the, check the packet for minutes, but we do have a, something to act upon, and that is, if you recall, we updated the speed limit along Highway C a couple weeks ago. And this is to adopt the traffic maps, which also includes some, I believe some school zone issues that one of the officers noted was lacking necessary updates or wasn't in compliance. So that's part of this as well, along with just clearer definitions in other areas. So we need, we're looking for someone to make a motion to approve the submitted traffic map updates.
I'll make a motion to approve the submitted updates to the traffic map for the Public Works Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, new maps are approved. Delhart Commission, I'll just report our next meeting is tomorrow. Everyone's welcome if you'd like. We don't get a big audience there, but things are just running smoothly, so no news is always good news from Delhart. Police Commission, Elder Person.
There was no meeting. I have no report.
Okay. Library Board, Elder Person Henry.
Yeah, we met last week and heading into budget season, so we're gonna be going over the next couple meetings, going over the budget. And then the big news was the pickle, it's pickleball, right? The nets, the, yes, the pickleball net sets are available to check out at the library, so the ones that, yeah, so if you want to, you can check them out from the library and take them to the park or take them to your driveway or wherever you wanna use them and then.
I can tell you that many of my constituents who are avid pickleball players already know about that and are totally stoked, so thank you.
Yeah, that's the big one. So thank you for Parks and Rec and coordinating that. And then the last Tuesday of each month is the fundraiser, so check that out. It's usually at Culvers, but it moves around, so check where that's at. And continue with the summer reading program, so especially with bridges and they have a really cool, I mentioned it last time, the passport, you can go around to all the different bridges, libraries and earn rewards by getting points. And that's for everybody, not just kids, so adults can do it too.
Alright, thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals. Anything for us on that? I don't believe so. Is that correct, Daniel?
No, no meeting, no report.
Okay. Promotional and Tourism Commission, Elder Person Valdi.
Yes, we had a meeting. We met last Tuesday morning, seven-thirty, bright and early right here. Commissioners agreed to partner in a marketing campaign. This is a new thing. It's combined with the Ice Age Trail Alliance and both the city of Delafield and the Ice Age Trail Alliance are splitting the cost for this Promotion and Tourism Board. It's about thirty-six hundred dollars. The Delafield Trail community will be highlighted in the promotions and its multimedia, along with twenty-second actual commercial spots that will run in August, September, and October. The commissioners were very excited about this. I'm new, so believe it or not, I don't talk much. Z2, which is our tech people who do all the video work, continue to do great work. They have done some analytics on the website visits. They, they find a high performance, particularly on our visit delafield.org. And of course, the real focus on the top page visits are the events and festivals, which we have a lot going on, especially in the summer. We have, we also got to watch one of the videos, which was really good fun. They're going to be doing more video filming. The dates and locations haven't been finalized yet. And then Deb is surveying hotels about printed visitor guides. They did update some of them with our new mayor on them, but they're looking at more printed things and videos to go into some of the stuff that run in the hotels, talking about what's going on in Delafield. But the new Delafield visitors guide will be ready by March twenty-twenty-five and our next meeting is August thirteenth, seven-thirty a.m. if you wanna come.
Awesome. Thank you. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, I don't believe there was a meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Elder Person Grimmer.
Yeah, quite a bit since last time, so I'll draw your attention to a new metric that Lake Country Fire and Rescue is advocating. It's called the Effective Response Force. In the past and continuing, we are measuring the effectiveness of our response time by our response time, how long it takes us to show up at the scene. The good news is May's response time was nine and a half minutes. There were times when we were at ten and a half, maybe eleven minutes. But we are, at least for May, we're at nine and a half minutes. Lake Country Fire and Rescue leadership did develop this second tool called the Effective Response Force. And basically what it is, is while the first person gets there in nine and a half minutes, how long does it take to get what's considered an effective response onsite? So if there's a fire, NFP, National Fire Protection Association says that for a particular fire, let's say you need seventeen people. So how long would it take LCFR to get seventeen people onsite? That's the Effective Response Force. So I just want to make all of you aware that that's being generated. The board has asked for more standardization in some of, of how those numbers are determined, how the response force is determined. But just to let you know that it's out there. Any questions on that?
I'm gonna keep going back to, I still would love to see what would be the expected response times.
Yes.
Because again, that, that is such a critical part of.
We have something like that with the new software that was developed. There's Chief Fennig. With the new software that was developed with Waukesha County, we can get kind of a heat map that says this is what we would expect a drive time to be from station thirty-one to your house. A caveat there would be that these are not EMS drive times. These are regular Joe traffic drive times. So you'd have to extrapolate a little bit, but that does exist and we are working to get a kind of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay.
The third metric that I mentioned, response time, number one, effective response time, number two. And what I'm advocating for is a third, kind of a quality metric, which is how quickly, not only are we on scene, but how quickly can we, what's the outcome? How do we measure success? How do we measure quality, not just getting there, but actually, how do we measure that outcome? Do we save a life? Do we get them to the ED? That's harder to do and I acknowledge that, you know, every situation is different. You've got somebody that's pulseless non-breathing versus a fire. So, but I mean, that's what my wish list would be. So that's the first thing or the second thing. I would want to remind folks that our joint meeting is September sixth at six-thirty. I want to let folks know that of our five new hires, two unfortunately, one quit, one failed to make it through all the markers towards full employment, so we still have two vacancies there. The engine is gonna be discussed later tonight. We did hire an auditor for a very reasonable price, about seven thousand less per year than our original. And that is about it. Our next meeting is this Wednesday. If anyone is planning on attending, it is in Delafield, but not the city of Delafield. It's in the town. It's in Station Thirty-One at five p.m.
What was the date again of the joint meeting?
September sixth at six-thirty.
Matt, who is the auditor that was hired?
The auditor is Hawks, 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 Hawks. Hawkins Ash CPAs. Chief, would you approach? Could you confirm? I've got September sixth as the joint meeting. Did I get that wrong? That's a Friday.
It's not on a Friday.
No, thank you for catching that.
Let me look at the calendar.
Thank you, sir.
Otherwise, you have to include a fish fry.
It's the fifth is what Matt, Chief Fennig's email said a week ago.
I apologize. It's the fifth.
We're, we're still confirming location. Right now, we believe it's gonna be back at Catamarine. Trying to find a room of that size to hold that many people is difficult. So the other one, we're trying to keep it in our seven communities. Otherwise, we've been doing some Waukesha County Budget Task Force meetings at the Rooker Milky Building off of one sixty-four, which is kind of out of the way, but it is a tremendous space that they have there, so that may be another option.
And while you're approached, anything to add to, to update the City of Delafield Council on operations, budget?
No, I mean tremendous kudos goes out to our staff right now on ebbing and flowing with the RNC and we have a very talented comm L, which is a comm leader down in the hard zone right now, working on state communications plans. And if you can imagine the, the technicalities that go into getting the Secret Service and the FBI and Milwaukee Fire and Milwaukee Police and every other alphabet soup agency that's down there right now to communicate it is extremely complex. And Jamie Formia, who we are fortunate enough to have as a state comm L leader, and he's, he's down there right now helping that problem. We have two individuals that are going down, one tonight, and they're, they're each taking twelve-hour shifts, but they're working with the skit team to help make sure that crowd management is done and done appropriately and things like that. So we did, Matt, get the IGA assigned last week Friday, so that's covering all of our staff's overtime to be down there, including every fringe benefit. I mean, it's gonna be a zero-cost game to us at the end of it. Jamie Formia, the comm L gentleman, actually is on the clock for the state of Wisconsin right now, doing that stuff because he's, he's part of a governor, govern, governor-appointed group. And then, you know, all of the things that we're handling around here locally, which we wouldn't think would be big and we had one little thing kind of pop up today that we kind of had to jump on real quick and, and take care of and thank goodness it's, it's not gonna be anything major, so. Yep, just, just ebbing and flowing with, with everything going on, so. And hopefully, we're passing those sit reps out to Tom and Tim and things like that. So it's hopefully trying to just keep all the information flowing, so.
Great. Any questions for the chief?
Okay, you can stay there. We got one more commission, then you'll, we'll bring you up.
No further report.
Alright, next committee is Dear Management Committee, so Elder Person Wilkin is not here, but I'll just put in a pitch for two things. One, there is a vacancy on that committee. And this is not a, as important as it is, as far as the organization and the law and stuff like that around it, it's a working committee. I was encouraged to make sure that people were aware that they like to get out there and get dirty. Jacob can attest to that. So if you're a hunter, have hunting experience, wanna get out and just see where the stands are and help clear, not only do we need someone to be on the committee to help in that respect, but just volunteers. So just come to one of the committee meetings and, you know, sign up and just put yourself on call. It's a fun activity if you like outdoors.
Absolutely.
Okay, so from that, we'll take item six, which was, is the special order of business, discussion and action on authorizing LCFR to enter into a purchase agreement with Pierce Manufacturing for a super sale on a pumper truck. Buy now.
At the low bargain price. Yes, and thank you. So a little context on this, we have, since the inception of LCFR seven in twenty-twenty-one, in the capital outlet plan has been the replacement of a pumper truck in the year twenty-twenty-eight. The pumper truck that's being replaced is a two thousand and five Pierce pumper truck that the city actually owns. So you would get the proceeds of that sale at the blistering resale rate that we have. So that, but that will be in twenty-twenty-five. So when we took delivery of the ladder truck in January and February of this year, we started having the initial conversations with our manufacturer's rep while we're doing our pre-construction and our, our construction inspections on those vehicles. And just basically outlining that we were aware that the lead time is three, three years. When do we need to start having the discussions on it and so on and so forth, and what do those discussions look like? To which he informed us that the lead time is now four years and that if we wanna take delivery of it in twenty-twenty-eight, we should start having the discussions now. So we said, okay. So we got through the ladder truck and got that all taken care of. Really, the, the discussions with, we have a, the twenty-eighteen Pierce pumper that we have, that's engine thirty-one right now, was designed and built by staff for a very specific purpose of short wheelbase and short in terms of height because of some of our driveway restrictions in the city, in the village of Conne Malak Lake, in the village of Sheniqua, and, and some of the long, tight driveways that we respond to. So in the past, you've seen some of these trucks get extremely long wheelbase-wise. The longer the wheelbase, the harder they are to get up and down some of these tight driveways. So we, we pretty much have the template set of what we like and what we needed to do. It is not, no frills. There's no seven thousand dollar bells hanging off the front of them or anything like that. It is a truck for firefighting purposes. It, you know, we design them intentionally using, I guess I'll call it the Southwest Airlines approach, where all of the levers are in the same spot. Most of the controls are in the same spot, because when you have people coming through and, and operating them, the more consistency you can keep with that, the more efficiencies you gain. So that's the approach that we took on it. There is one change that we're not exactly happy with, but it is what it is, is that there's a new diesel emissions requirement coming out in the year twenty-twenty-six by the EPA. And that diesel emissions requirement's gonna change us to, require us to change the body style of the vehicle because the one we're using right now is so small and it doesn't, won't fit all of the new diesel and DEF requirements that are with it. So with that, we talked with the, the manufacturer. We worked through things. We got initial pricing in June, rather, sorry. And that initial pricing came back and with it came two caveats that the pricing is only good until August first, where there's a one-point-seven-five percent price increase and then a further price increase later on in the year. Knowing the cost of the vehicle and the ability to save three and a half percent potentially, we approached the administrators to put together a meeting. The administrators, we try to meet at least quarterly, sometimes every other month on various topics, but we kind of put this meeting together in relatively short order, all in an effort to save money on this one-point-seven-five percent that's approaching us on August first. So Tom, jump in if I'm misstating anything here, but we got together with the administrator group. That administrator group met, we talked about really three different things. The first of which being, do we wanna take advantage of any prepayment type options? Pierce does offer a prepayment for us if we so desire and a discount. That discount was, I believe, right around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if we paid for it all upfront in August. We pretty much knew, we, Lake Country Fire does not have a million dollars cash sitting in our capital improvement fund. So we knew that that wasn't really going to be something that garnered too much traction, but at least wanted to discuss it and throw the option out of there. So that the administrators declined that idea. We also talked about prepaying for it in February, which will be when LCFR has capital funds and the communities disperse it. which will be when LCFR has capital funds and the communities disperse it per the interminable agreement to us. To which the administrator group pretty much unanimously thought that prepaying for it even in February wasn't a good option for a couple of reasons. The first being, while we do have some agencies that continue to pay cash for these type of vehicles, we do have other agencies or partners that do borrow for it. So there was a, what are we, what's our borrowing rate versus what's the rate that we're saving? So they kind of thought that it was a little bit of a wash in that regards. I can also tell you, I've conferred with Chief Bowen over in Western Lakes about how they're purchasing vehicles. They have an engine on order and they're ordering another ladder this year yet. They're not prepaying for them anymore. They ran the math and also came up to the same conclusion that it's just not advantageous, even though there is a savings out there to prepay for them. So with that, it was pretty much the recommendation of the administrator group to proceed with the purchase contract on the vehicle, but not do any sort of prepayment type options. And Tom, if I'm misstating anything here.
You said it all perfectly.
Sounds good. So talking, rambling a little bit on it, but any real questions? How we got here is, I guess I should also say, I'm here before you tonight because this is totally out of sequence for what we normally do. We normally put these things through our normal budget process, which is kicking off here on Wednesday night. And things just kind of roll through that. But this being a little way out of context for what we normally do, we want all of our communities to have a say in how it goes down and everything like that. So that's why I'm sitting here in August or June, July. Sure.
When we talked, I had one point of clarification and just to be sure. I mean, just by the state of how the funding formula works right now, should population change, call volume changes, that alters slightly over time. And I know you've got a note in here, too. If a member were to no longer be a member at the time, then bills come due, or let's say we acquire two new members or something like that. When we actually pay for this, this is going to come out based on the formula at the time, when it's delivered and how it's paid, the timing it's paid, right?
Yes, I'd just like to offer one clarification, Mayor, is that the capital funding formula does not change. The capital funding formula is fixed.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yes.
But whatever the status that should, would be in, in 2028, when this thing's getting.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, if you add deletes, yes, that would all, I would assume, have to be worked out with any sort of agreement when you add somebody in or if somebody decides that.
Yep, okay. That's all I had. Anyone else have any questions? So we're looking for approval for the acquisition of this truck for LCFR.
I'll move to approve the Lake Country Fire and Rescue to enter into purchase agreement with Pierce Manufacturing for a pumper truck to be delivered in 2028 at the cost of 1.189089.
Second.
Matt, just a real minor point of clarification. Those last three numbers, is that a typo? Is it 009? I think from the, from the contract it is.
Is it, can you look at the contract real quick? And maybe I transpose two numbers just so we.
I just, yeah. It is.
1189089?
It's off by 80 bucks.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
I just caught it over the.
I'll amend my motion by $80. What's the price?
009.
009.
Is it, was I over on the original one or under?
You were over.
If we can talk for about 4,000 more hours, we'll get this down to zero. All right, anybody else have any questions?
I had just a question regarding kind of along the lines of what you were saying. If, if it does, because in the past, when we had the new members, then it became a new entity, correct? Is that Lake Country Fire Board or Lake Country? Where's my brain? I'm sorry. If, if we were, I guess my question is, is this, would this transfer over to a new? If we were to take our new members and become some kind of a new entity, if that were to happen, would this contract then transfer over? Is it transferable is what I'm asking?
It certainly is transferable. Yes, and I think any, Tom, I don't want to speak for if a new IMA were to come.
I'm just, I mean, with everything that's going on.
Any entity entering in or adding is not going to say, we're going to take the ladder truck, but we're not going to take the pumper. We're going to take this ambulance, but we're not going to take that.
I'm just, but as far as even from their perspective, this would be a transferable contract.
It would be part of Lake Country Fire and Rescue's assets.
Okay.
Of which they would be joining.
Okay, I just, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
When, when I was looking through this and I saw the prepayment alternatives and I started noodling numbers and present value and interest rates and blah, 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 and I, does this make sense? And then I finally turned the page and I go, they came to the same conclusion I did, don't prepay. So I was glad to see that.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Give Pierce some business. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, now, on to the mayor's report. Just a couple of events, and I'm going to miss some, so I apologize. But since your last meeting, I did get to just say a few words at the Liberty Park concerts. And it was, the Kids from Wisconsin was a, was a really cool show. Big crowd and lots of people sitting in the grass and looking up at the stage. And just, just a great time. And that's coincided with other events, too. And, and the parking lot held. There's still a couple of spots left, so. And along with that, we had a block party, of course. I picked the right two days to go. We didn't get rained on. So we're looking forward to what the, the numbers are from the, from the chamber as far as how well they did, but hopefully that rain didn't soak them too badly. Arts Festival was a Saturday, another huge event for Lake Country and Della Field in particular. The Lions ran the parking, so I chipped in for that, too, and that was fun. And also got a sneak peek at the Commodore at one of their dinner tasting things. Really pressuring them to open because we're tired of answering the question. But beautiful, beautiful building, and they did wonderful work. And they included a lot of the history of the city and of the building and the area and the art and decor. It's, it'll be, it'll be a pleasure to go in there when you get, when they're open for the public. So we're working with them on that as well. And then a couple other orders of business here. For Lake Country, we've got a couple of appointments and a resignation. So Roger Yolo, thanks, thank you, Roger, for serving so long on Lake Country Fire and Rescue. He really worked through some, some tenuous times with negotiations and, you know, the changing of the organization over the years. And he just asked if he could step aside. And I said, of course. Thank you for your service. So I'm looking for a motion to accept Roger Yolo's resignation from LCFR.
I'll so move.
Second.
And I would just like to thank Roger for his service as well. We all come to these jobs, volunteer with different skills, strengths and weaknesses. And Roger was just an extraordinary, paid extraordinary attention to detail and served Lake Country Fire and Rescue very well. So thanks to Roger.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, Roger has resigned. And based on timing, there's seven months left, or about seven and a half months left of his appointment. So I thought Kent Atwell would be a good person to step in. He's got all the history entering the budget cycle, and this is less of a contentious time for Lake Country Fire and Rescue as far as this budget cycle goes. And I thought with his history and that he'd be perfectly appropriate to step in. So I'm looking for a motion to accept my appointment of Kent Atwell to LCFR.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I was kind of surprised. There are, I know there are people who apply for different committees. I've been in some of the conversations and negotiations. And I'm just, my only concern is that there's some less than positive regard from some of the member communities. And will this impact our ability to work well? That's my only concern.
Yeah, I'd say if you're not rubbing, you're not racing, right? I mean, there's, there's going to be, there's going to be some of that. And I think in this, in this role, it'll be a little bit different for him. He'll be on the, on the team side as opposed to the chief side, kind of. Thanks, I did consider a lot of this in the appointment. And I, I appreciate the fact that he brings, like I said, a lot of the detail. And, and also, there was, we had some off-season discussions with our other members, municipalities, in November, December and January, where we're looking for common ground. And he was instrumental in helping get some of that. And he'll remember those conversations when it comes up again this fall. So I thought that was important to bring to the table, too.
Good to know. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, Kent will be serving the rest of Roger's term. And then item C, we had a vacancy on Public Works. And Elder Person Berg helped me locate somebody who's eminently qualified. He is a retired Colonel from the, he worked at St. John's for, I think, 30 years. And he, he's got a really neat, interesting background in geology. And he did some special construction projects when he was in the military. Lives in our neighborhood and was eager to step up. So he's got something to do in his retirement, along with the other things that he's doing.
Be careful. When you retire, you get so busy.
Yeah. So looking for an appointment for, confirm my appointment of James Kebasek to Public Works.
I'll make a motion to approve James Kebasek.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, welcome, new Public Works member. And very briefly, a couple of things. Again, I like to echo Paul's comments about Don Till's passing. He was a wonderful man and brought a lot of knowledge to the table. So I just have that as a note. Keep his family in your prayers because it was a sudden, sudden change for them. And also, we've got a couple of people. Officer Wolf has been on board. He's celebrating a nine-year anniversary as a police officer, I believe. And I did mention it before, but our city administrator is on his 20th or 21st year. 21st year. He celebrated last month, so. And I'm, all indications are that he thinks he deserves a vacation, which he's taking the second half of the month. Well, well-earned. So thanks, Tom. And that's all I have for the mayor's report. So on to new business. Discussion regarding an accounting of the city's legal fees associated with St. John's Bay's pure permit contested case hearing. Tom, please help us with that.
Yes, this was requested by Elder Person Valdi at last meeting. So I did provide that summary. The legal billings do go back over a year now. And if you add up all the legal billings, we have accounted for just over $4,200 of legal billings, with a little over $1,000 of those occurring prior to the council establishing what was a $5,000 budget. And those legal fees do not include anything for June or July yet. We have not received those invoices yet. And certainly, we expect the, the June one to be the most substantial one because that's when the contested case hearing occurred. And then just to be complete and transparent, I wanted to make sure I included any legal costs that were involved. We also had SEH shoot a drone video to be used for evidence. We have not received an invoice from that yet, but I'm expecting that to be around $800. And then we also did hire an expert witness, one, one paid expert witness, Heidi Kennedy. And after receiving an initial estimate from her of $4,000, we were able to work with her and get that down to under $1,500. She did very much minimize her time, even to the point of when she was in the courtroom waiting for her turn to testify. She brought other work with her, billable work that she was working on. So we weren't getting billed for times such as that. So this is how it's proved out. I think things lasted a whole lot longer than expected. There was delays. The hearing was rescheduled. And then the hearing did take a full week. But that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Tom. One is, I'm just wondering what our attorney charges per hour? Because I noticed in the May billing, there was only, I mean, there, that's $337.50. That's a very low one hour from one attorney.
She charges $225 an hour.
Okay, and thank you. And I noticed, too, that during the contested case hearing, on two of the days, there were two attorneys at the city's table. So I'm just wondering, was that an assistant? Were they working like in a shadow or pro bono or? But there were two people there.
So that was an associate. I, I'm not positive, but I do believe we won't be getting billed for that. But again, I haven't seen the June invoices yet to be certain.
Well, I know a lot of times attorneys, lead attorneys will bring someone in who's younger and they're, they work pro bono and there's no bills. So, but I was just curious because I'm watching every penny because we're bumping up against five grand. Without, as you said, the most expensive time will be this and then the summations submitted. And then the ruling can be whenever, but they have till August 12.
That's correct. And then the, then the potential for an appeal after that, right?
Yeah, always. I guess what happens now is that the common council authorized $5,000. We're going to go well over that. I'm sure it's not going to break the bank, but I'm just curious.
That's very likely to be an agenda item when we get those billings. So we'll, we'll follow up with this.
Okay, thank you.
We're not counting the prior expenditures, right? I mean, the, the case hearing was filed June 21st. The motion to fund the support of the DNR was filed, or was approved July 17th. That's forward-looking, that's not back-looking because it didn't exist prior to that.
Probably the least significant detail, but it's a detail.
It's not 1,057 that isn't part of the covered expenditures.
That would be my interpretation as well, but I just wanted to be fully transparent on all the costs that have been involved in the, in the project.
Yeah. I made the motion, so.
I testified for free.
That was.
It was short.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, this, this will show up again when we get those, when we get those billings in the summary and then what, what's actionable about it, we'll, we'll determine that as a group. Okay. B, approval vouchers payable report for June through July 16th. Looking for someone to make a motion to approve the voucher list.
I move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
All those in favor, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're paying our bills. So on to report of city officials. Tom, city administrator.
Yeah, just two quick things. First of all, I'm pleased to report that last week, the city's bargaining team and the police union did reach a tentative agreement for, for an extension of the collective bargaining agreement. The attorneys are writing up the details of that agreement right now for both sides to review. It would be premature to discuss the terms of that agreement at this point. Once it's drawn up, then we would look for the police union to ratify that agreement. And then we would expect that agreement to come before the council for discussion next month. But positive news, it appears that we have, well, we have reached a tentative agreement. The second thing is just, did I hear someone?
As you said, that's great.
Yep. Second item, just the St. John's pure contested case hearing that we just discussed. Just a summation. Again, that was the week of June 17th. It did conclude, at the conclusion of the witness testimony, the judge had asked all, all four attorneys involved whether they wanted to make oral closing arguments or to be allowed to prepare written briefs. All attorneys agreed on written briefs, and they were given until August 12th, I believe it was, to file those briefs. And then from, the feedback from our attorney is that once the judge receives those briefs, it could still be a couple of months to potentially half a year before she prepares her written decision and distributes that. So hang tight, but we might not have any decision for a while. And that concludes my update for tonight.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Molly, city clerk.
Yep, so the partisan primary election is coming up here in a few weeks. So if anybody, we sent out all the absentee applications or all the absentee ballots that had applications on file a few weeks back. Still continuing to send those out daily as we receive them. In-person starts not next week, but the following Tuesday. So that'll be up in the clerk's office. If anybody doesn't want to wait in line. So, if anybody doesn't want to wait in line, come up to the clerk's office and we'll take care of your voting needs that day. And then, just kind of final touch base is, we did have our final fourth staff member start today. So, we are fully staffed. And in a few weeks, everybody seems to be catching on very quickly. So, I do expect us to be kind of rolling here in another couple of weeks. So, we're very excited.
That's good news. Okay, any, oh, the city treasurer, treasurer's report is in the packet. Any council requests for future agenda items? Okay, feel free to bring them up at any time. There is correspondence. I'll just highlight the fact that there remains vocal requests for enhanced pedestrian access on Milwaukee Street. So, that is a street of high concern. And there's some, there's a letter in the packet citing some strong opinions about pursuing that again or still. And so, read that. And let's see, also, there's a public hearing notice from Village of Summit. So, seeing no other items on the agenda, the meeting is now adjourned at 7:55.